First of all, let me start off by telling you how refreshing it is to see a boardroom with people in. For the last two years, this has been basically empty, and it's so good to see our community back in our school board office. So thank you for being here. Tonight, we're taking a little moment of time to recognize students, employees, faculty, for some of the contributions and some of the recognitions that they've had over the last, possibly, year and a half to two years. We haven't been able to do what we typically do last year and the year before. So we wanted to kind of start looking at people that have been achieving over the last couple of years. So with that, what we'll do tonight is we'll have our superintendent and board president presenting the award, and our secondary director will be announcing those award recipients. So without further ado, our superintendent, Mr. Jared Morton.
Hey, again, I want to reiterate just how happy we are to see you all in person tonight. I know it's been a long few months, but it's funny that I see a lot of the same faces that I often see at these events because the same remarkable families just keep having kids that just keep achieving at such a high level. So to the staff that's here, to the parents that are here, to the kids that are here, thank you for being here. Go eat, have fun in Tivito, and if you're living in less than ideal conditions right now, our prayers are with you as we recover from IED. So with that, let's get started. Mr. Delcum.
Okay, so the first recognition this evening...
Hold on, wait. What are we giving out first? You got this? Okay. You know what we're giving first. All right.
Okay, so our first recognition this evening goes to an employee who's worked for us for a very long time, and I've never even heard of this award being given out, but this is a very prestigious honor. So we're recognizing Mr. Jerry Blackwell from Tivito High School, who has been inducted into the Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association Hall of Fame for the entire state of Louisiana for the year 2021. This induction is going to take place during the Louisiana Athletic Association's Football State Championship Weekend in December. I think it's this weekend, actually. Mr. Blackwell started as a trainer in the eighties and as a student at Shawman High School. He went on to serve as a student trainer and a head athletic trainer at Nichol State University. In the early 2000s, he presented the idea of employing athletic trainers for LaFouche Parish High Schools. And since then, he has been the trainer at Tivito High School, taking care of hundreds and thousands of their students and taking care of them and getting them back to safe play over two decades. This is one of the, if not the highest recognition possible for someone in his profession. So Mr. Jerry Blackwell, Tivito High School.
So the next recognition goes to an employee who was very significant to our department. I'm the IT manager for all of you who not know who I am. We recently implemented a big system upgrade, and I want to recognize Ms. Molly Boujouat from LCO Middle School. She's a media specialist there. She was very instrumental in this project. She spent countless hours on setup and training calls and helped make the transition from the old system to the new system possible. She is a valuable resource to the media specialists and library staff members and is assisting with training the staff and setting up new systems at all the schools throughout the year. Her expertise in the system and her willingness to improve efficiency made the project successful. So I want to thank Molly for all of her...
Can you all turn this way, please, real quick?
Oh, absolutely, Sam.
I had to find a phone that I'd store it through.
All right, our next recognition, we would like to recognize the Bassmaster High School Combine Skills National Champion, and that is Levi Tivito from Tivito High School, who recently signed on to attend Louisiana State University in Shreveport on a fishing scholarship. This four-year scholarship consists of TOPPS, his LSU Purple and Gold Scholarship, and the Dr. Lacy Williams Fishing Award. Mr. Levi Tivito. Our next recognition is for a student who scored a second place in the Southeastern Louisiana National Wildlife Refuge Complex Art Contest, Ms. Bowen Lou from South LaFouche High School. Okay, our next recognition is for a group of students that qualified for the National FFA Farm Business Management Career Development. Four students from South LaFouche High School. I'm going to read them off. First, Ms. Carson Chassot. Connor Collins. Trent Foster. Alexa Reed. This next group of students were selected to the LHSAA All Composite Academic Football Team. Three students from South LaFouche High School. First, Jackson Otan. Jackson Boujouat. And Brody Petrie. The next group of students was selected to the LHSAA All Academic Football Team from South LaFouche. Connor Collins. Darren Doucet. Patrick Gisflayer. Jacob Guidry. And Landon Wisher. These next two students were selected to the LHSAA All Academic Composite Swim Team from South LaFouche High School. Isabella LeSane. And Kendall Smith. These four students were selected to the LHSAA All Academic Swim Team from South LaFouche. Michael Bascal. Addison A. Bear. Lily LeSane. And Kayden Larial. The following student was selected to the LHSAA Composite All Academic All-State Cross-Country Team from Central LaFouche High School. Luke Huddleston. The following students were selected to the LHSAA All Academic Volleyball Team from South LaFouche High School. Kendall Sharamy. Ashlyn Duet. And Ava Petrie. This recognition is for an entire group. We would like to recognize the 2021 Gulf Coast Marching Band Championship Grand Champion, the Central LaFouche High School Trojan Lancer Band. Next, we would like to recognize two separate teams who won a district cross-country championship. Both of these teams, the boys and the girls coached by Tracy Paulstone of Central LaFouche High School. So first, we would like to recognize the Central LaFouche High School Girls' Cross-Country Team on their district championship. And then, of course, the Central LaFouche Boys' High School Cross-Country Team for their district championship. And our last recognition this evening, we would like to recognize the Girls' Swim Team who won their district championship meet, the South LaFouche Girls' Swim Team.
We need some more space here. Now I'm going to ruin this picture with my face. Look again, I know many of you traveled through the post-hurricane traffic to get here, which is just going to mess up. I fight it every morning, so I know what you've been through to get here. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our huge thanks to the parents for supporting these phenomenal kids and also the many coaches that put in tremendous hours and athletic trainers, band directors, Tracy well worked with, and all of the sponsors from FFA. The time that they put with our kids is seen by their accomplishments tonight. So thank you all for being here. Thank you, coaches, for what you do, band directors, and everybody that makes this possible. Please drive safely tonight, and if you haven't eaten yet, I would invite you to go and eat so that you can spend some money and we can get the sales tax revenue.
I'd like to call the December Board Meeting to order. We'll start with an invitation by Mr. Todd Adufren and a pledge of allegiance from Mr. Allen Gordon.
Please, Father. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we ask that you provide us the guidance and discernment needed in deciding the next steps to move our beloved school district forward. May we always implement a vision of unity that extends to the hearts and needs of all stakeholders. As Christmas approaches, a season based on love, peace, and charity, let the birth of the Christ child allow us to refocus our hearts on doing your will. May the message of Christmas and the loved it brings touch the lives of all students, employees, and families. Keep us safe this holiday season, and let us never forget the true reason for the season of Christmas. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in the God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Madden?
Here.
Ms. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Thomas? Ms. Patita?
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Here.
Dr. Guyot?
Here.
Ms. Boujouat?
Here.
Mr. Adufren?
Here.
Mr. Schwes?
Here.
Mr. Plaisson?
Here.
Mr. Glantz? Mr. Wong?
Mr. Archer?
Here.
Mr. Bedard?
Here.
Ms. Shaw?
Here.
Item two, approval of board consent agenda items. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held November 3, 2021. Motion by Mr. Todd Adufren, second by Mr. Madden Plaisson. Any comment? Public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. You dance. Item three, approval of landed facilities management committee's recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, November 16, 2021. Mr. Randy Schwes?
Thank you, Madam President. A, to accept a change of order to add eight additional days to the contract due to inclement weather during the month of October 2021 for the new Tivito Middle School project. So move.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Dr. Dennis Guyot. Any comments? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
B, to accept a change of order to add a total of 10 additional days to the contract, three days due to inclement weather during the month of October 2021 and seven due to the power outage caused by Hurricane Ida. Power outage August 28, '21 through October 7, 2021 for the cafeteria additional project at the Rose Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Mr. Allen Archer. Any comments? The date? We need to probably make that correction. Any other comments? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. All right, the motion carries.
C, to accept a low bid for limestone, fresh limestone, and consider approving Grand Isle Shipyard as the lowest responsible bidder. So move.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Mr. Rick Boudreaux. Any comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
D, to authorize advertising for bids when construction documents are complete for the re-roofing at North Rose Elementary School, LCO Middle School, South LaFouche High School, and for the athletic field repairs at South LaFouche High School, Tivito High School, Central LaFouche High School due to hurricane Ida damages. So move.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Ms. Mary Patita. Any more comment? Any public comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
E, to authorize to hire Houston J.D. Red Junior Architectural Corporation, Domain Architecture, Myers Engineering, and Murgis Rome Architects for hurricane Ida repairs at various sites throughout the district. So move.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Ms. Valerie Boujouat. Any more comment? Ms. Patita?
I do have one, and we're looking at all of these contracts with, you know, with the hurricane. We all know that it's a lot of money, but it seems like we're just rushing through it. But this has all been discussed very closely at the finance committee meeting and at the landed facilities. So I just want the public to know that it's not something that is automatically moving about a lot of study.
Thank you, Ms. Patita. Any further board comment? Any public comment? We'll vote. Motion carries. Item four, approval of insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, November 17, 2021. Ms. Patita?
To accept the renewal of the VCS reinsurance contract for 2022 as presented to the insurance committee on November 17, 2021 by Mr. Buddy LeVey, Galve Perpetual Services. So move.
Motion by Ms. Patita, second by Ms. Robin Bell. Any more comments? Any public comment? We'll vote. Motion carries. Item five, approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held Wednesday, November 17, 2021. Ms. Shaw?
A, to approve advertising for proposals for E-Rate Project Managed Internal Broadband Services and Category 2 products for the upcoming 2022-2023 fiscal year. So move.
Motion by Ms. Shaw, second by Mr. Valerie Plaisson. Any board comment? Any public comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
B, to approve advertising for proposals for an identity management system. So move.
Motion by Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Robin Bell. Any public comment?
Sorry.
Any board comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries.
C, to accept the bid from CNB Computers in the amount of $379 for Dell Latitude E7470 as the preferred laptop model for refurbished laptop computers. So move.
Motion by Ms. Shaw, second by Dr. Dennis Guyot. Any board comment? Any public comment? We'll vote. Motion carries.
D, to accept the bid from CNB Computers in the amount of $314 for Dell OptiPlex 5050 SFF as the preferred desktop model for refurbished desktop computers. So move.
Motion by Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Valerie Boujouat. Any board comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion carries. Item six, new business. A, to approve revisions to policy BVA officers as presented on superintendent order.
Thank you, Madam President. Historically, this board has elected its president and vice president at the first meeting in January. As its policy, prior policy reads, at the regular meeting held in January, the recommended change reads LaFouche Parish School Board shall elect one of its members to serve as president and one to serve as vice president. Prior to the starting calendar year, with the exception of an election year of a new board, what this board ought to do is, in the month of December, elect a president and vice president that will begin its term in January at the first official meeting of the new president, vice president time to prepare for the meeting and take appropriate action in the fall of January.
I hear a motion. Motion by Mr. Adufren, second by Mr. Rick Boudreaux. Any board comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. If not, we'll vote. Item passes unanimously. B, to continue as the date, time, and place of the regular meetings for 2022, the first Wednesday of every month at 7:00 P.M. in the school board office in accordance with policy VC meetings, and waive the policy for the month of March, setting the date for Wednesday, March 9, 2022, which is the second Wednesday of the month. Any board comment? I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Petita. Second by Mr. Al Orger. Now, any board comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. C, to consider authorizing requests for proposals for garbage collection services and take appropriate action. Ms. Tobias?
Yes, good evening. The school board has received notice from our garbage service provider, Waste Pro, that there will be a significant price increase for garbage service collection services. The coronavirus pandemic, along with the devastation by Hurricane Ida, has contributed to increased costs over the past 18 months. There are cost increases due to national driver and labor shortages, as well as breakdown in supply chains. Due to these increased costs, the Fush Parish wishes to re-advertise these services through the RFP process and explore other options available for comparative purposes.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Bouzwa. Second by Mr. Randy Schwes. Any board comment? Any public? Yes, sir.
How much was the increase?
Sure. Right now, per year, we were paying approximately $165,000. So the increase is going to bump us to $268,000, which is a $503,000 increase. Yeah, it's over $8,000 a month.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Public comments? So if not, we'll vote. Item passes. D, to consider appointing Mr. Jonathan C. Pele to the Board of Commissioners, Special Education District One, to serve for a six-year term. Can I get a motion? Motion by Ms. Mary Petita. Second by Mr. Al Orger. Any more discussion or comments?
Madam President, I'd like to make the comment that Mr. Pele, we've served as a coordinator several years ago. Great choice, great person that who understands the district very well, especially Mr. Pele. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any public comment? Okay, if not, we'll vote. Item passes. Mr. Pele? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Hi, no problem. Item E, to receive a report from Mr. Josh Manning, South Central Planning, and Development Commission on redistricting and take appropriate action. Mr. Manning?
Yes, hey, good evening. I believe that there's a presentation. Well, thank you, guys. I'm glad to be here tonight. It's been a fun process to go through this redistricting plan. And hopefully, we have something for you guys to consider tonight that you all like and that we can move forward with. So just to go kind of give a brief overview, I know most of you are familiar with this by now. I've met with all of you guys and gone over all this information. But just for those who in the audience or who else might be present in the room that don't quite understand or aren't familiar with redistricting, what redistricting is, is the redrawing of the legislative districts. And this takes place all across the country right now after the results of the 2020 census are made public. So it takes place every 10 years when the census comes out. And everything from Congress to the state representative and state senate, and then, of course, the local school board, council, and city councils are going through a redistricting process right now. The reason we have to redistrict, one, is required by federal law, state law. But also, our communities are constantly changing for social, economic, environmental reasons. As we have storms, as we have economics booms or busts, these all have an impact on our communities. People move around, change where they live. So we have to adjust our boundaries every so often to adjust for these factors. As I mentioned, also, the law says we have to, the U.S. Constitution, Article One, Section Two discusses congressional redistricting. The Fourteenth Amendment, which is the protection clause, goes on to further clarify that. And also, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 is a very important piece of federal legislation that governs the redistricting process. And it states it prohibits plans that intentionally or inadvertently discriminate on the basis of race, which could dilute the minority voting. So we take that federal legislation very seriously when we're crafting these plans. Here's a couple of citations of state, relevant state law. So for school boards, the relevant state laws, Louisiana revised statutes 1771.1 through 1771.7. So whenever we develop these redistricting plans, we have several goals that we go into with the intention to try to meet. The first is we want to comply with all state and federal law, specifically, as I mentioned, the Voting Rights Act of 1965. We also want to make sure that our plans, that all of our districts are, to the extent possible, compact, meaning that we try to have a minimum distance between all of the parts of the constituency. We also make sure that all of our districts are contiguous. There will be no instances, you know, where we have a part of a district in Tibodo and then part of a district in Fushan, but no way which those are connected. We have to make sure that they're all connected. When you look at it on a map, you can see where they're connected. We do our best to preserve communities of interest. Those are geographic areas such as neighborhoods where the residents may have a common political interest. And we also do our best to preserve the cores of the prior districts, meaning that we maintain the districts as close as possible as they exist currently. We also want to avoid parent incumbents from warring against each other. Now, there's a unique situation that we're facing here at the school board. As you guys are going, you're changing the face of your districts. You're going from 15 districts down to nine districts. So those last two points that we normally try to cover, they aren't really in play for the school board this time. So the timeline, the main date on here that you guys need to be aware of, March 1st, 2022, that is when school boards must be completed with the redistricting process. Now, we got a late start to redistricting this decade because COVID delayed the release of the census date. They were not able to do the door-to-door operations in the spring of 2020 like they normally do, and in the summer of 2020 like they normally do, do all the stay-at-home orders. So that delayed the census from being released in April of 2021 to August of 2021. So we're in a bit of an accelerated timeframe that you would normally have during the redistricting process. So the completed task, those things that we've done so far in this process, we have met with all of the council and the school board meetings. We have what we call consultations to discuss redistricting, to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on, and also discuss some different options to make sure that we have a good understanding of what some of the concerns might be for the individual districts. After we met with all of you guys, we spent the next couple of months working on, first, there were three alternatives, but then there was a fourth alternative that was added as we went through our redistricting committee process. We worked with a joint redistricting committee between the council and the school board. Each body put up four members of those bodies. We met with the committee members. And out of that process, we have what we're calling Alternative 1A amended. That was presented at the November 10 committee meeting. And that was the meeting, or that was the plan that the committee recommended that we present to both the school board and the councils. That's what we're presenting to you guys tonight. The next steps, after we go through this tonight, you would then want to call a public hearing based on your procedures. Then, once we go through that public hearing process, then in order to adopt this plan, you would adopt it via resolution. We're hoping that would be completed in January of 2022. Once that resolution goes through, then we'll submit the plan to the Secretary of State's office and the state legislature. What they do is they're working with the registrar of voters, they're working with the clerk of courts to make sure that the plan can be implemented. And then we will also be submitting the plan to the Department of Justice as required by state law. So here is the 2020 census data within the council-district alignment. Because we're using the council district as kind of the base for where we're going to start as we're trying to make a plan that works for both the council and the school board. So we're looking at the current alignment. What we have is districts two, districts three, and district four, all needed to lose a little bit of population. And districts seven, district eight, and district nine have to gain some population. So what we're looking at is that fourth column on the table on the screen. That's the percent deviation. We want all of our percent deviations to be less than, or plus or minus, 5%. So on the bottom of the screen, there you see the overall range of the plan is 26.7%. We want that overall range to be 10% or less. So this map shows the change in population over the last 10 years, from the 2020 census, or I'm sorry, from the 2010 census to the 2020 census. And this is by voter precinct, voting precinct. So you can see, we've had a lot of population loss in the southern part of the parish, and really, the central part of the parish, too. Where we've seen the most population growth is in the city of Tibodo and is in the Bay and Blue area. So we see that reflected in this slide I just showed you, where we talk about what districts, which council districts need to gain population, lose population. So what we have in all of our alternatives, and specifically for Alternative 1A amended, is we're having all of the populations shift northward. And so we're having these council, or these school board and council districts are going to have to be adjusted to where everything kind of moves a little bit north as well. This next map shows the black population by census block. This is the total percentage of population. And why this is relevant is in order to comply with the Voting Rights Act of 1965, we want to make sure that we do our best to ensure that we have one district that would be what we call a majority-minority district. This is a district that's made up of 50% or greater of minorities in that district. In this situation, for this body, that would be District One, which is a Tibodo-based district. So here on the screen is Alternative 1A amended. It is very similar if you compare it to the current existing council district. There are some changes, there are some significant impacts. As I said, everything is moving northward a little bit. So District Nine moves a little bit in District Eight, District Eight moves a little bit in District Seven, and that kind of continues up until, really, the St. Charles community area as you enter the city of Tibodo. And that's where we started to have some population growth. And that's when we have some balancing going on amongst those districts within Tibodo to try to balance that population. The demographics for this district. District One maintains a majority, a minority-majority, a 55.2% black population in that district. So we would comply with the Voting Rights Act of 1965 with this alignment. And our overall range is 8.9%. As you can see on the fourth column of this table, all of the districts are within the allowable plus or minus 5% deviation, so we weren't able to balance the population. That is all of the information I have in this presentation. I'm willing to answer any questions. And I'm also willing, over the next month, as you guys are preparing for voting on this, I'm willing to meet with anybody, whether from this body or even a member of the public who would like to come into our office and review these maps a little bit in detail. We can do that either in our office, or we can even set up something online in a Zoom meeting or whatever is best for individual call. Thank you.
So I'm moved we accept the redistricting map selected by the steering committee and prepared by Mr. Jonathan.
Motion by Mr. Dennis Gueye. Second by Ms. Mary Petita. Do you have any further questions or comments? Mr. Van Alder?
Yeah, just a comment that I really want to recognize outstanding work that South Coast Planning has done. This could have been a contentious type of situation, but it was obvious from the start that fairness to all entities was at the forefront. We all had an opportunity to look at the map, question individually, and also as a group. And, you know, I have to say that the map that was drawn up was a census and was amended a couple of times. But I appreciate the transparency and the fairness that you exhibited throughout this.
Any more comments? Yes.
I'd like to thank Josh as well. I think some of you attended the meetings, and there were good meetings between the council and the school board. Lots of ideas were tossed around. We walked away with this map, the consensus between the school board and the council to present to the public as basically one entity of government affairs. And that we pretty much all agreed on this map. But I also like to thank Ms. Petita, who was selected as the chairwoman of the steering committee. And she did a great job of the meetings, along with Mr. Josh Manning as well. But there were good meetings that the public should be proud of, and that I think we have an agreement on these maps. So it should be good going forward. Thank you, Ms. Petita.
Yes, Ms. Petita, and I want to thank the representatives from the board that did a wonderful job. They met with the individual, with their councilman, and worked together. So it really was a collaborative effort. And South Central Planning and Josh did a wonderful job of putting everybody's ideas together. I want to thank them, thank the councilman, but also thank our board members for looking into it.
Yeah, and I inquire, like, what is the timeline? So you said there would be an opportunity for public comment. What's the timeline for that?
I would recommend that at your next board meeting in January, that you would hold a public hearing. You can advertise that beginning now or whenever you're a regular policy state as far as advertising goes. We'll leave the map here. If anybody from the public wants to come here to view the map, that's fine. We'll have the maps on our line on our website. I can share that with the school board as well. I can share that with the school board as well. And then, as I said, if anybody wants to come to the office and view those maps at our office, that's fine. Also, once you go through that public comment period, that would be the appropriate time to adopt the plan. And so we'll provide a resolution for you guys that has all the information, all the language that you need at the January meeting, and you can adopt it after the public hearing, if after the public hearing you still want to adopt it, that is.
So that's something we can get done on the January meeting. It can all happen according to our requirement. Thank you.
So then, should we not vote on Dr. Ghiatt's motion to be adopted? Should we not vote on it until after the public hearing?
It just says to receive a report. It's just a report.
Okay, so that's the motion, to receive a report?
It says to receive a report from Mr. Josh Manning.
They clear what his motion was.
Okay, so to receive a report from Mr. Josh Manning, South Central Planning, Development Commission, and District.
I understand that, but I thought he had moved that we adopt it.
Yeah, so I think we adopt the report at this point to move it forward, and then to have a public hearing. And at the end of the public hearing, that's when we adopt a full resolution.
Then we approve it.
Right, for it to go forward to the next step. I believe that's my understanding.
No, that's about covered.
One more thing, so. I hope people realize how much work we put into it, because it's not just us in the council, the clerk of court's office. You have some split precincts now that she's going to have to go in and reconfigure. So it's a lot more than just us in the council who are in on it. They were at every meeting along with people in the steering committee, so thanks to them as well, because they're going to have their hands full as well with this, because things are going to be a little bit different. And I think we tried to make as few split precincts as possible, but there was pretty much no way, so thank you.
Any public comment? Item passes. F, to consider authorizing the superintendent to request permission from the district attorney to employ special counsel, namely Mr. Wayne T. Stewart of Payments Sales at S. Vice Noah and Perkins LLC, and adopting a resolution requesting from the Attorney General, the H.A.R., and Mr. Stewart pending the approval of the district attorney. Can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Roudery, seconded by Ms. Valery Boujoua. Any more comment?
I just wanted to advise, the board probably knows that this law firm specializes in education law. It represents the opposite, so it's a specialty.
Thank you, Mr. Roudery. Anyone else? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. G, to receive a report from B. C. for home site lease F located on Section 16, Township 14S, Range 17E in the Choctaw area, and take appropriate action. Can I get a motion? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, seconded by Mr. Randy Schwes. Any board comment? Any public comment? If not, we'll vote. Item passes. Seven, memorial reconstructions. A, Ms. Vera Washington, retired teacher. Ms. Petita?
Ms. Vera Washington was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August 26, 1961 as a teacher at Zion Elementary School. Ms. Washington also taught at CM Washington Elementary School, Tibido Lower Elementary School, and WS LaFourde Elementary School during her career. Mrs. Washington retired on June 1, 1996, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 35 years. And I would like to comment that Ms. Washington, I taught with her husband for many years. Both were very, very fine educators and just really, really sweet people, and I am interested in this by the community and especially her character.
Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by General consent and will be recorded on a special page of a limited book. Item eight, officer elections. A, election of officers of LaFouche Parish School Board to serve a one-year period beginning January 5, 2022, in accordance with Policy BVA, officers, one, president, and two, vice president. Do we have any nominations for president? Mr. Ravennor? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion by Dr. Ghiatt, seconded by Mr. Taladue Friend. Nominations are now closed. Since there are no other nominations, Mr. Benard has been elected resident of the school board by General consent of the members' president. Mr. Benard, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, real quickly, and then I'll have to do some official comments after we go on the nomination. I just wanted to thank the committee, not the board, for selecting me in the citizenship role. I can promise you this, if you know me, I'll be prepared. I'll be professional, and I'll be punctual. My wife will see to that, and carrying out the duties and the responsibilities of this position. So thank you very much. And with that said, let's get on with the nominations.
Congratulations, Mr. Benard. Okay, vice president. Do we have any nominations for vice president? I would like to nominate Ms. Marion Petita. Are there any other nominations? Dr. Ghiatt?
President, I move to close nominations for the office of vice president of the school board.
Motion by Dr. Ghiatt, seconded by Mr. Roudery. Nominations are now closed. Since there are no other nominations, Ms. Marion Petita has been elected vice president of the school board by General consent of the members' president. President, excuse me.
Ms. Petita, would you like to say a few words? There's something I want to say, and I'm very humbled, that you have chosen me as the vice president, and I just know that I would keep my straight as best as I can.
You'll get the issue.
And I'd like to thank you for your vote of confidence, and I know that I will definitely do the best I can, and I really thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ms. Petita. Item B, election of three members to serve along with the president and vice president on the advisory committee of the LaFouche Parish School Board, beginning January 5, 2022. Please be reminded that at least one member from each area of the parish shall be elected to serve on the advisory committee, along with the president and vice president, with no more than two representatives on the committee elected from one area. Do we have any nominations for advisory committee members? Mr. Dufresne?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Barry Plaisos.
Mr. Barry Plaisos. Ms. Petita?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ms. Gina Babin.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
We need one from South. I'd like to nominate Mr. Al.
Mr. Al Archer. Are there any other nominations?
We have one.
We have.
One off, central, you don't need anymore?
So because of parish positioning? Are there any other nominations?
All right, so who said to close nominations for the advisory committee members?
Motion by Dr. Ghiatt, seconded by Mr. Al Archer. Nominations are now closed. We will now distribute ballots for voting.
So we're voting for three?
Yes.
You're voting on votes? Just the central?
Yes, right now you only have to vote. As it stands, our president is from South, vice president is from Tibido.
So we're just voting on the central?
We're just voting on central, so it's Mr. Barry Plaisos?
Oh.
I need him. I'm sorry, I just needed him. So we just have to vote for five? We have to vote for everyone, because we have one Tibido already, one North already. We have to vote for everyone. So you are selecting three people.
But you have to make sure you select someone from the central.
Four from central has to be seated, yes.
But you could have two.
Should we vote for three?
Yes.
Do all three of them have to come from the central? At least.
One from central has to be seated.
If everyone just votes, they're conscious for the three. At the end of it, we'll be able to select if there's too many from any given region, and then delete the one that's too many from the region, and you vote. Does anyone need Ms. Babin to read the list of four nominees? Go ahead.
Our nominees are Mr. Barry Plaisos, Ms. Gina Babin, Mr. Al Archer, Ms. Valery Boujoua. You should be voting for three from the four.
Can you turn the paper, Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Okay, ballots are collected. They are as follows. Marion Petita, Tina Babin, Barry Plaisos, Valery Boujoua. It said, I, Marion Petita.
Cast my vote for.
Tina Babin, Barry Plaisos, and Valery Boujoua. I, Robin Bell, cast my vote for Tina Babin, Valery Boujoua, and Al Archer. I, Ravennor, cast my vote for Barry Plaisos, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Barry Plaisos, cast my vote for Barry Plaisos, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Randy Schwes, cast my vote for Al Archer, Barry Plaisos, and Valery Boujoua. I, Cheryl Thomas, cast my vote for Barry Plaisos, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Valery Boujoua, cast my vote for Valery Boujoua, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Al Archer, cast my vote for Al Archer, Valery Boujoua, Barry Plaisos. I, Tina Babin, cast my vote for Valery Boujoua, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Dennis Ghiatt, cast my vote for Valery Boujoua, Al Archer, and Tina Babin. I, Taladue Friend, cast my vote for Barry Plaisos, Al Archer, Valery Boujoua. I, Rick Roudery, cast my vote for Tina Babin, Al Archer, and Valery Boujoua. I, Christie Chabert, cast my vote for Tina Babin, Valery Boujoua, and Barry Plaisos. All right, votes. Votes are tallied, and the new advisory committee members will be Tina Babin, Al Archer, and Valery Boujoua, in addition to Mr. Ravennor and Ms. Marion Petita. Item nine, tentative dates of future meetings. A, there will be no committee meetings for the month of December. B, advisory committee meeting Monday, January 3, 2022. Regular board meeting Wednesday, January 5, 2022. If there's no, Mr. Benard?
Yes, I'd be remiss if I wouldn't recognize the positive rule that our outgoing president and committee chairpeople have done. To clarify that, I've been on the board for eight years, and I cannot remember a year of more turmoil than witnessed this year. Hurricane I, COVID-19, classes destroyed, families destroyed. Mrs. Babin and her chairpeople were calm, cool, and collected when needed, and tough when required, showed good memory throughout. when required, showed good manners throughout. Maybe a lot of other administrations would be fractured by this. She kept this community together and part of it. So I thank her for that, and I'm sure the rest of us do.
I do appreciate that. I really want to thank you guys, everybody. We have grown together as a board with lots of support. You guys have always been there anytime I needed help or had any questions or anything like that, so you have no idea how much I appreciate it, everyone.
I've got to say, as a former outsider looking in, if this, if the board would have been, as I read in the past in the local fish rock, but I would not enjoy serving as much as I enjoyed serving in the last century in my present place. And Dean, a lot of that is.
Thank you.
I have my personal request. Seeing as how it's my understanding that it's our superintendent's birthday, I would like to start off going to use, sing happy birthday.
She was two seconds from hitting.
Are you all ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jared. Happy birthday to you.
He's about half the age.
I saw a picture with his dad.
With no further.
I think I'm older than his dad.
I am also.
Maybe he's younger.